Good evening, and thank you very much for joining us for Exeter's Listen and Learn session, which will discuss the Return to School Plan for the 2020-2021 school year. To present and explain this plan, the Exeter School Board is pleased to host Dr. David Ryan, Superintendent of SAU 16, Esther Asbell, Associate Superintendent of SAU 16, and the Superintendents Representative to the Exeter School District, the entire leadership, senior leadership team from SAU 16, and the entire leadership team from Lincoln Street School and Main Street School, including Steve Adler and Beth Catterick, Principal and Assistant Principal at Main Street School, Drew Beristow and Deanna Donnelly, Principal and Assistant Principal at Lincoln Street School, and Renee Beauregard Bennett, Director of Special Education for the Exeter School District. Joining us this evening from the Exeter School Board are Don Bullins, Vice Chair, Sarah Edwards, Patrick O'Day, and Patty Sorette. My name is Neil Blaken, and I'm the Chair of the Exeter School Board, and it is now my privilege to introduce Dr. David Ryan, who will be leading this evening's meeting. Good evening, Dr. Ryan, and many thanks to you and the rest of your team for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, Neil. It's great to see everyone. Thanks so much. We had a nice late night last night where we covered quite a bit of information relative to our recommendation for our Return to School Plan. I'm going to take advantage of the chat box and I'm going to punch in the link to the Frequently Asked Question Document that we referred to last evening. We spent about four and a half hours together. I believe we were on television for four of those hours, or at least accepting questions for four of those hours. We answered quite a bit of questions that were asked by members of the SAU 16 community. Today, we took all of the comments that were put into the chat box throughout the four and a half hour meeting and just reformatted them so that they were in readable format. And it turned out to be about 100 pages, 12-point font, double-spaced. So we had quite a bit of information flow last night. Our goal tonight is going to be just to provide a summary of the planning to date within the elementary schools in the town of Exeter. I know that Ms. Asbell has some questions that had already been asked of her that she's going to put into the chat box as well. That's going to be available for our guests who are attending to be able to view at this point. When we finish our discussion and the principals are done chatting with the public about what those plans are, sharing those plans, we would then like to receive questions from members of the public, and we'll turn that function on. Other panel, other attendees may not see the questions being asked. I will read them. Last night, we ran into a number of situations where there were several questions that were either repeated, or there were a lot of comments that were made about the questions or the answers, and so we're going to try to make sure that we keep our questions specific, and if there are any duplications, we'll not read those. We'll move forward. But we want to make sure that we respect and recognize everybody's participation tonight. And so we will certainly pay attention to what's happening in the chat box as we move forward. Our recommendation, as we pivoted last Thursday and Friday from a discussion about some in-person and remote, we were originally looking at an in-person return. We felt that we would be able to do it within the health conditions we have currently in our community. We proceeded to gather information from the community, the students, excuse me, the staff and the families. And as we put our data together, we realized that we weren't going to be able to safely open our schools given the staff levels that we were looking at based on COVID-related issues, that also we have some of our supplies that we're going to need to ensure that our schools can open cleanly. We have them on back order. Everything's been ordered. And given that we're about four weeks away from the start of school, we weren't confident or certain that all of it was going to fall into place. So the really complex connection of students and staff together, making sure that everybody was safe, that we had all of our safeguards in school, which means enough staff members and enough PPE and enough cleaning supplies and equipment was going to be ready to go on that very first day. So we felt it would be more prudent to look at phasing in through a full remote plan, beginning the school year on a remote platform with a strong focus, or not the strongest focus, absolutely the strongest focus, on learning and paying more attention to how are we going to improve our student learning? And continue to plan on logistics for trying to work some form of in-person opportunities for students. So we made the presentation on a remote opening. We're going to continue to work at providing in-school opportunities for learners. We'll talk through, or we talked through some of those last night several times. You can see that in the chat function. Ms. Asbell is posting a lot of information. So tonight really is more about what does that specifically mean to Main Street School, Lincoln Street School? And we want to be able to give the principals an opportunity to share some of the planning that they've been doing with their Return to School teams. There was a lot of that work being done today. There's more of that work being done tomorrow. There's been an abundance of work being done since early spring. As everybody knows, we had four committees looking at our four base models. We're certainly building off of one of our base models, which was remote instruction. We're adding elements of trying to create learning centers in our schools, looking at community care centers for families who work and need to have care for their school-aged children because they won't be able to be home to support remote learning. And so I'd like to ask Esther if she wants to just highlight what's been put in the chat function or provide any other comments, and then introduce our principals, who can then provide some of the plans that are being developed for each of their schools. Esther?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Ryan. I've posted all the questions I got over the past few days, specific to Exeter. Some other questions came in, and they were addressed for the joint board meeting last night. So those answers are in that Frequently Asked Questions Document that Dr. Ryan provided the link for. These were much more specific. They came in basically yesterday, today, and maybe some over the weekend. I tried to answer them all, and so I hope that helps for people that weren't able to make it, or I appreciate the questions coming in ahead of time. As you can see, I imagine some people on have these same questions. So take some time and look through those if you're able. So that's why I posted them early. And now, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Steve Adler and Drew Beristow and Deanna Donnelly and Renee Bennett and Beth Catterick as they present where they are right now with Return to School Plans for Exeter Elementary Schools. Take it away, guys.
And Esther, do you need me to post this, share this presentation?
So you should have the capacity. There you go, Steve. Perfect.
Okay, and present. Okay, so first of all, I just, I thank you for giving us a chance to share. I just want to start. Certainly, we are in unprecedented times. It is heartbreaking for the staff of both schools and the principals and to really think about not having the opportunity to start in person. Certainly, we love being with the kids. This is the joy that brings so many of our teachers to the work that they do. And what I do want to let people know is that we will give the same passion and care to this plan as we would to being in person. We will miss that chance to connect on a daily basis, but this is our plan for what it would look like to return remotely.
So we learned quite a bit from our first foray into remote learning in the spring. And I think it's, you know, from crisis comes opportunity. I think we, from this learning, we can create the best learning environment possible for our kids, given the circumstances. So some of the key things that we're considering for a successful reentry include questions of equity in determining who needs what to access the curriculum and get the most out of instruction. This could include time, duration, frequency, different tools. It's a matter of really getting to know and understand our kids, identifying technology and tools necessary to be consistent and to leverage our situation. We want to recognize and respond to trauma and stress in both students, families, and staff. We want to develop strong relationships and garner engagement with the school. And the more students find that learning is applicable to their life, the more engaging it is. We want to offer an agency or a choice and self-determination and self-direction for our students. And we need to allow the students to move on when they're ready and build consistency across grade levels and grade spans. So the more we can remember what we learned in the spring, the better we can make our school experience for our students.
And moving forward and building off of what Drew just talked about, the focus for the fall for the Exeter School District is some highly effective remote learning instruction. And for us, and what we learned from the last four months from our district and from other districts and research, which is that we are going to ensure that students and teachers have strong relationships and that we find a way for them to make those connections with their students for the purpose of being able to motivate them, instill meaning and purpose in the students' learning. And the online learning opportunities are going to involve remediation, reinforcing, enriching of all students. So the purpose is to really to provide a structure and an opportunity for students through their online learning and through opportunities from their teachers that they've built a relationship with. They can either be remediated, we can reinforce skills, or we can enrich students. And because we are a CBE district, and we continue to think about our vision of a graduate, even though we're going to be accessing remote learning, we're still going to be working for depths of knowledge and a deeper understanding for students and staff working on how to ask those essential questions that elicit a deeper understanding for students and how they can demonstrate their learning in this format. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge and let the community know that we are really thinking about our students with disabilities. And even though we're in the middle of a health crisis, we do have a responsibility to educate students with disabilities and provide an individualized education. And we learned from the last four months and also over the summer that those two students are alike in how they access remote learning and what supports they needed buried. And we're going to use that data to make decisions moving forward for the fall and how we will work with students with disabilities to ensure a high-quality level of instruction. We think a lot about, and we want to honor the fact that we know that the school is the primary provider for those students and their education and that we are the primary provider for the behavior interventions and needs of those students with disabilities. And one of the things we've talked about a lot, and we're going to continue to talk about, is how we can target the special educators in the support staff schedule to really ensure that students are getting quality time with them and the time that they spend with their special educator or their support staff is really meaningful and purposeful in supporting their learning in a variety of ways. In special education, we talk about a continuum a lot, and it's no different for this remote learning time. So we're going to begin to engage parents now that we've made the decision for remote learning in the fall. IEP teams will begin to engage parents and make decisions, look at the evidence that we have for students' learning based on the four months of remote learning, as well as summer school, and what worked and what didn't work. And then we're going to come together and amend and write IEPs for students for the fall and how they can access the remote learning. Now, the National Center for Intensive Instruction did release some evidence-based guidelines for supporting students through remote learning, and we're going to be exploring that in the Special Education Department with the staff in the weeks to come and using that as we make decisions and engage parents. We also know that some students require face-to-face instruction. There are some students, due to their disability, that despite the best efforts, remote learning was not a tool that they could use. So we're going to be having those conversations, parents. We've already started to have some of those conversations with parents, and we'll continue to engage them. And what does that look like for their students? And honor their concerns about safety and as well as ensuring that our students are accessing education. And there is an accountability factor that we haven't lost and that will continue to put on the forefront. Our instructional decisions will continue to be supported by collecting data and focusing on students' progress monitoring. And also, some of the work and research that we've read is on how to do a better job of that in a remote learning format or as face-to-face. So we will still have that piece on our plate. And a lot of parents have asked about special education evaluations, and they will continue with parent's permission. And we're just really cognizant and careful to ensure that we have health and safety precautions in place when we are doing the evaluations for our students.
Just want to talk a little bit about the background for this plan. We've been working really hard to get ready for the return to school excited as to think about being with students again. This plan was done certainly in conjunction with the SAU 16 leadership, which has been key. And we've also been, had committees formed at both schools, working with staff to continually look at what the return could look like depending upon the circumstances. We know we have some planning days coming up. We're going to look really carefully at making the most of those and working with the staff through interactive professional development to really provide a quality return. And just wanted people to understand sort of how this plan was developed.
And so here's some examples we're going to share with you on how, we'll take that broad-based framework that Renee was sharing and how our plan will be to make remote learning successful. So number one is building relationships between students, families, and staff through family orientations and check-ins at the start of school, a few weeks after school begins, and then when the quarter ends. This will include anything. Well, we'll talk about it in a future slide. We are going to be building engagement with students and families by surveying families to learn of the remote learning needs. We, as an administrative and staff team, will identify trends and respond to their needs before school begins. And we're working to build common expectations and schedules across grade levels for consistency to build engagement. And of course, we'll continue under our structured system of support to make sure students are getting what they need. So the following slides that we'll share will give you a few more details about that.
Just want to talk about the orientation. We're, you know, we're working with young children. It's really important that they have an opportunity to see the school, to meet the staff. For the first two days of school, we're going to have either an in-person or if the family prefers a virtual orientation on September 10th or September 11th. We'll, classroom teachers will be sending out invites for times for families to sign up and bring in their children and to meet. It's going to be a chance for the school to learn more about your child, for you to share information about your family. And it's also be a chance for us to share information about our learning programs, provide you with the beginning of the year materials, help to give you access to how we can use the technology that we'll be using during remote learning. And classroom teachers will be either present or if they're unable to attend, will be there virtually, and there will be a staff member there to show you the school as well. We'll have some guidelines in place during that time to ensure safety. Everyone will wear a mask, children and adults. They'll, we'll have physical distancing in place, six feet. And if needed, by any of the participants, the meetings can be held outside rather than inside the building. And then, after we've done the orientation meetings in September and get a chance to connect with you, we're going to try to schedule regular times for us to meet with you and with your children. We're expect to be able to schedule one in early October and hope to be able to schedule another one again in November. And again, those can be times to share information, answer questions that maybe we couldn't answer remotely, and then also to share new materials as well. So continually, and then so that it's a chance to enhance the instruction, but we also hope will be a chance to work on one of the ways that we can work on building those connections between teachers and children.
And again, more examples and opportunities for those connections and building relationships. Of course, this list that we have here is not complete as we haven't really met with our staff yet to discuss these things, but these are some things that we have done and we will continue to do. Some of them might be new as well, but morning meetings, scheduled morning meetings in closing times, individual connection time between teachers and students, social learning opportunities, for example, game times, lunch bunches, and then we'll have regular social and emotional classroom lessons as well. So again, this is not exhaustive, but these are just some examples of how we'll build relationships over the course of each school day. And in terms of the daily scheduled, the daily schedule. So the schedule, generally speaking, will have varied learning opportunities. So these opportunities will include screen-based and non-screen-based activities. So they'll be scheduled throughout the day. For example, there'll be a math block that'll be consistent throughout, say, grade three. There'll be ELA, English Language Arts block through that will be consistent. And then these blocks again will be, have varied activities. Some of them might be teacher-led, some of them might be small groups, some of them might be independent work. Not all will be screen-based, however. Large and small group instruction and intervention will happen in each subject area, and those will be scheduled daily as well. And of course, choice and voice will be built into daily learning through the use of project-based learning. For example, we have many of those for social studies and science especially, where students can have a chance to explore their world outside in various subject areas. Specials will be scheduled much like they are an in-person-at-school schedule. So art, music, library, PE will be provided daily. Not each daily, but you know, each day will be devoted to a different special. And they'll engage in in-person and/or video-type activities depending on the situation and if there's somebody available.
So we shared this because again, we just really wanted to highlight the things that we're going to try to focus on through the remote learning, primarily remote learning. One is first and foremost, relationships. We know that that is key, that we need to connect with children, with families, that it's really important that our learning be deep. That's why we do things like project-based learning. We'll be looking at providing high-quality online learning experiences, both to remediate and reinforce and enrich. And these three focus areas, we hope and expect will provide quality remote learning experience for your children. And I just want to thank you for putting a share, our thinking. We know this is evolving. I'm sure we'll have more to share as we continue to work with our staff. We really appreciate the opportunity to continue to work and work with you and your children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate you sharing that out for us. So that is essentially where we are in our planning. Again, our teams have more time this week to continue as well as through the rest of the summer. I'm sure that's encouraging. I'm hopeful it's encouraging for families to see that there are going to be opportunities for face-to-face and some in-person, whether it be inside the building or outside, as long as the weather holds. Again, looking at trying to phase in these experiences, it's very important, particularly K and one, that these orientations take place. And so we're all very pleased that we're moving forward and able to provide that in a very safe way. I believe at this time, unless there are, unless the board would like to ask questions prior to any members of the, of the audience, I think we can go, we can start there and see Don Bullins.
Hey there. Good evening. Thank you all for all of the slides. They are very helpful. I do know I've seen, I heard a few questions last night, and I've heard throughout the community a few questions about when kindergarten screening would be and orientation-type things for, you know, incoming kindergarteners or students who are new to the community in and of itself. And I wondered if you had any timelines about that.
So I'll have either, probably have Steve address that.
So the intention for the orientations were the September 10th and September 11th orientation meetings that are going to take place. It'll be a chance for each kindergarten child to come in with their family, see the school, meet either in person or virtually with their teacher. And if the family can't come to school, we'll meet virtually with them. So that, and then we'll do follow-up. Our hope, expectation is to do a follow-up check-in in early October, and we hope to be able to do another follow-up. We hope to be able to do another follow up in November, as long as we are still working remotely. We did start the screening process with a little bit of just the registration information. The parents were able to share some things. We don't have a timeline for assessment because one of our focuses as we first get into the school year is really going to build work in classrooms and building connection and community. We don't want to start right off the beginning assessing kids. We want to have a chance to build those personal relationships. Before we begin to really assess students' academic needs, especially since we're starting remotely, but it's just important to first work on community building relationships. And giving them a chance to understand some of the routines that we'll be working on as we proceed into the year. I don't know if Beth, if you want to add anything about assessment.
Oh, I think that that pretty much sums it up. I think the one piece that's really important to remember is that. For some of those kindergarten or first graders, it's, this is an unusual start to their school year or school experience. And building those relationships and getting to know them on a personal level is going to be key.
Great. Thank you both.
I'd just like to follow up with a quick one about so far as like Lincoln Street, when we would sort of have move up day, if you will, from. You know, second to third grade, is there anything that sort of incoming third graders new to the school can expect? Would that be maybe similarly the ninth and 10th? Sorry, the 10th, 11th or something like that or?
Yeah, thank you. It will follow the same schedule. So we'll have those days where it will be more family and teacher kind of connection time than it will be, you know, whole group. Way that we've done it traditionally, but our intention is to have the same sort of orientation and. You know, get to know you period of time, same as Steve laid out for his mainstream school.
Great. Mr. Blaken.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. A couple of questions. One, could you give our community an update on the. Going one to one for computers? We talked about it last night. I think a lot of the the parents would like to know. If they do need some IT or Chromebook, because we decided to go one to one, how to actually go about doing that and discuss maybe just some of the logistics of that.
So Steve, is that something that you're able to address? Because I believe we're one to one, three to five. So we're looking at K to K and one.
So we're very fortunate. The school board supported right at the end of the year, having funding for one to one. We have been receiving the iPads that we ordered. There has been a hold on some of the Chromebooks being arrived. So those are late. We have quite a number of Chromebooks and iPads. We'll be able to distribute to parents at the start of the school year. Because of a delay in the order of Chromebooks, I'm not quite sure if we'll be able to get all of those out. The iPads will be given for kindergarten students. And I have to just verify that those have all come in. So we have ordered and now it's just a matter of making sure they've all come in and as we receive them, we'll be sharing them with families.
And if someone needed a Chromebook or some support, should they just contact the building principal or? How does that work?
So one of the things that was on the opening slide and we'll make sure we put it in the survey that we send out is we do have a survey that we're going to send out to get information prior to the start of school about family needs. And who their child is. And so that certainly will be one of the questions that we can make sure we include is if the family needs access, so we can make sure they get that access right from the start.
But one, one follow up, it's my impression from looking at the the slides that is it every morning and every afternoon of every school day that. The children will have group interaction with their class by via Zoom? Is that is that the right way to look at that?
Yes. But without having spoken with the the teacher specifically about how that will look, I don't want to sort of give a. Grand plan, but there is there is time at the beginning and end of the day for a connection with students. And you know, the outlook right now is that, yeah, it would be an opening and closing kind of activity or or conversation of some kind, but it it could look different on different days.
But but under any plan, the focus is clearly to connect on a daily basis with the kids in a group and as necessary individually. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The questions from board members. Patrick.
Turn off my mute here. So a couple of comments and questions. One is about the Chromebooks. I thought that was a great point that Neil brought up about the Chromebooks. And my understanding was also that with the Chromebooks or iPads that. Part of the attraction of the school providing those is also that they would be loaded with the software needed. That if there's a transition back to in person, that that transition would be will be smoother. Is that right? Can someone say something about that?
I can. The Chromebooks are now due to come in mid September, so hopefully closer to the 10th than the 15th. They are coming all loaded and ready to use. In other words, our tech departments do not need to load any, anything on there. They are all ready to go. So once the. Day we get them, the next day we can start to push them out.
And they'll be loaded with with software that would help folks move transition back to the in person classroom if we're able to make that transition.
Correct.
Okay. The second question I had is was about remote learning. Just, I think it'd be helpful if folks could say something about how remote learning. Will be different this time. And I saw a lot of that in the slides. But even in terms of preparation, I know there's some additional professional development. I know there's an outside consulting firm. That the district is working with and it would just be helpful if folks at home could hear a little bit more about that. Could you, could someone elaborate upon that?
I'm going to ask, Chris could talk to that just from the SAU perspective of how we're looking at that across. All of our schools and then if our principals want to add anything to that from a building base, I think that would be really helpful.
Thanks, Patrick. Great conversation. We have thankfully the board gave us five extra days for professional development and that's that's a godsend. Today with our principals, we had a lot of discussion about what the opening couple of days are going to look like and then what are some common SAU professional development we have to have with all of them? Tomorrow I meet with the principal so we can really dig into what are some common days that we need to set aside and then what are school based days, but. In all of our buildings, we are creating a schedule that will talk about, you know, trauma informed, how do how do we work with the trauma skills needed for these kids of all families in our staff? How do we work with empathy training for our kids and our staff that I think is on day one for all of our our staff members walking in the building and. That will transfer into the classroom either in person or remotely. How do we we beef up our our flip classroom? How do we use technology in a way that we balance screen time for our kids, but deliver instruction in a meaningful way? And both that synchronous learning where everyone's together, but then when we break out with kids and an asynchronous learning, so. There could be different learning paths for all kids, which we've been trying and successfully doing with competency based learning. We've talked a lot today about about assessment and assessment policy, really assessing kids for what they learn, not holding them back for what they didn't do. And that's a major shift that that we didn't have. You know, how did we the competencies that we built and we've we've started to finalize K five? How do we embed those into our learning practice every day through our platform of seesaw, the grading platform of Alma and then in our daily practice? So. Those are all conversational pieces as well as progressing with our math instruction. We we came a long way with the resource we used up until March and then that shifted with. With Ready Math and iReady, that online component. So those are all part of the discussion. By the end of Thursday, we will have a list of what each school is doing so that we have common comparisons in professional development. And so we can share between our schools and our district because we have a lot of experienced educators who can help drive. Learning for all of our teachers because this is new for all of us. So that is the that that is what we will have on Thursday is a plan for all of those eight days. What does it look like common in our buildings? And then what are what are different, more school specific? Learning and teaching that's going to happen with all of our staff. So that's that's the plan and it will be finalized in greater depth on Thursday.
Yeah, there's things I just like to add is, you know, we learned a lot from this spring. Some of the things that Drew emphasized when he was talking about what the remote learning was. That opportunity for choice is really important. We really, as we look at some of the independent small group work, look at how to embed that in that that remote learning. We'll have more opportunity for sharing materials that families can access that we weren't able to do in the spring. We know that individual time is important and we'll be looking for that as well. And we're really going to try to draw upon the things that we found worked well, frequent positive reinforcement as as we go through as students share work. All of those were things where we found more success. And so we're going to draw on our experiences, draw on the research we're doing about what quality remote learning and really. Beef up what we're doing and have clear expectations across the board for how we're going to work with kids.
Right. That was one thing I was going to add to Steve is the the expectations and the consistency from from classroom to classroom, grade to grade. It's something we'll be working on at the outset as well, but Chris, Chris did a good job covering just about everything we're working on the first couple of days with teachers.
So I I know this is a, you know, labeled as a listen and learn session and, you know, I hear. In my conversations with people at the SEU that people are listening and trying to learn from this. I know it's a board. That's something that's important to ask. I hear a lot of questions about remote learning. I think for some folks, it went fine. And it was a good vehicle, a good methodology and for other folks, it just didn't for a variety of reasons. And I'm I'm not here to try to encapsulate what all the reasons are. But I can imagine that a number of questions that are kind of come forth from the community tonight are going to be about that, particularly for very young learners. I know we've received some emails. We read every single email that comes to us. And we take in that information and we take in that feedback. I know the SEU is as well and. You know, I hope we're able to continue to adjust to take in that information as we move forward. I wanted to ask about something else, which is. Renee did a nice job in talking about the. Kids with special needs and that's a population I get very concerned about, those kids that are vulnerable. Another group is those that have meal insecurity. And I know that the administration has some plans for that. I think it'd be helpful if the community heard a little bit more about. How that gap might be met through a remote learning platform in the coming months.
Sure. Dr. Bennett, you want to address students under IDEA and how we will be providing equity there? And I'll take the food service.
Yeah, um, I think it's really important for the community to understand that we're going to be engaging the parents and the whole IP team. And looking at the past experience and what access to an education for the each student was during the four months during the remote learning or through the summer. The past students of the summer, we're going to use that information to come up with a really individualized. Proactive plan for the students in the fall and it's going to be unique for each student. There is no one size that fits all and. You know, Patrick, you alluded to this. There's some parents that have emailed and said this remote learning was really what my child needed and. I'm excited for him to continue or when they heard we were going back, I want to do part of this remote. Because you know, this was beneficial beneficial. And then we have other students that have just needed a variety of needs, including face to face, in home. Community support, supports at rehab facilities, just a whole gamut. So the community needs to know that. When we're engaging the parents and the IP teams, we are looking at a whole range of supports and what that looks like for each student. And we will continue to evaluate it in the fall as it as it. Happens and we have PD, we have research, we have experience, we've done a lot of conversations. About what does it mean for students with disabilities in a remote learning environment? So I feel like we have a lot more to offer. At those IP meetings than we did, you know, March 15th. So I think parents are going to feel a lot better when we can start having those meetings, which will be happening soon.
Thanks, Dr. Bennett. As far as our food service program is is working, Gene Pierce. Has worked very hard, as everybody knows, with a number of food service employees, as well as school administrators and employees who have helped our food distribution throughout this past. Five months. The waiver through the summer that the state has issued through the USDA out of the New Hampshire. Branch of the USDA. Will expire on August 31st. However, there's already a new waiver that's in place to begin on the first of September that will bring us through the end of June. Originally, when we were looking at how we were bringing students back into school from a. From a dual platform, whether it be remote learning or an in person experience. That waiver was in jeopardy for our qualification because there was going to be onsite service. Since moving to remote and and understanding and the USDA is quite complicated and Gene gets frustrated with it, but understanding. The USDA a little bit better and the waivers that are in place, these waivers are for students who do remote learning. Or begin school and ultimately after a few days move to remote learning. So. We'll be able to continue our food distribution site sites throughout the year. Provided or as long as we're on remote learning. So. In terms of food insecurity, Patrick, we'll be able to continue to meet the needs of our families, particularly those that most recently even. Have fallen through some economic or discovered an economic issue that requires them to participate. So we're happy to be able to continue that.
I think that's great and I hope everyone knows how to get in touch with folks at the SEU to continue the services. Because it's certainly an important need. Speaking of another need. I've also heard a lot of feedback about working families. You see it in the national news. You know, we see it locally in the feedback that the board gets. And I think there's a certain amount of privilege that comes from two parents that both work at home and still make the same income. Some folks don't have the luxury. That they have to go into an office space or else they just don't have a paycheck coming in. And I know the SEU has been grappling with that issue. I think that's one of the particularly challenging things. About being in remote learning, whether it's for 45 days or for longer. And, you know, again, I know some of this was shared last night, but I don't assume everyone on this call was on the call last night. So I think it'd be helpful. We can get an update on what the thinking is about how we might be able to help some of those families that are confronting that issue.
Certainly, I think we can tee that one up for Esther Aspel.
Sure. We're exploring a couple of avenues, one of them being what we're labeling community care centers. And that would be the situation where I spoke last night to tiers of need. And that could be social, emotional or academic. We operate on a tier one, two and three system in our schools, tier one being. The least amount of additional services or supports for social, emotional, academic versus two versus three being the most need. So we're working now on a process with our administrators to identify tier one, two and three students. And then working through that, obviously, some of those tier three situations will be addressed at the building and through the special ed process that Renee spoke of. And then. According to what we can get as we partner with our community care partners, for example, the Y would be one that we're trying to partner with. Their staffing and then our staffing, perhaps our paraprofessionals, some paraprofessionals would be pushed in to support our tier two. Students at the community care centers, which would be at school sites, common school sites. They would be available for that nine to two ish slot to support students who have their Chromebook, bring that to the community care center and during the school day. There would be additional supports above and beyond the for in this example, the Y staff, there would be school staff there, paraprofessionals that could support that process. We're also working with a variety of community care people. As in daycare and I'm Chris, chime in, Chris Andrewsky, if you have anything to add, but Chris is doing a really nice job of working and gathering information for all of their partners. In the surrounding towns, we have a meeting Friday morning to check in with them and see where they're at as far as also offering full day opportunities. That would be staffed by those those companies themselves, not school personnel. Such things as transportation, food costs, etc., for the community care center. Are all being looked at, all worked through. Some of that will obviously depend on numbers. Once those students are identified as tier one, two and three through a process at the school level with. Last year's teachers input, input from data assessments at the end of the year, those narratives, etc. So when that happens, I I apologize, it isn't more clear, but we're working through those numbers and obviously as many kids that need it. If we have the staff and can make it work, we absolutely will. It's just, we don't have a handle on the numbers from everywhere in SAU. It's just we don't have a handle on the numbers from everywhere in S A U sixteen yet to just to work through how many paraprofessionals we would need. Keeping small groups of ten or under, of course, the kids would follow all the safety guidelines, being masked, social distancing, et cetera. So those cohort groups would be small, ten or under for the learning day proportion. Before and after school care would be offered as normal at our schools and so parents that needed or wanted before or after school care that were attending those community care centers, again, those identified students by tier one, two or three would have the option of dropping off earlier and picking up at the end of the day like they normally would. And then we're looking at transport for that school day portion, that that nine to two kind of timeframe. So it's that's how it's shaping up right now. Again, working through numbers and with our community partners to try and meet as many needs as we possibly can in that avenue for working parents as well as students that may struggle socially, emotionally and or academically. I don't know if you have anything to add, Chris?
Yeah, thanks, Esther. As you could hear from my earlier comments, my son had puppy dog pals going on, so I apologize for that. So this is something near and dear to me, having a five-year-old at home and we've been listening, this started about four weeks ago, trying to find and work with our our community partners on childcare because we heard from the community. This would be one of the biggest obstacles for our parents returning to work and what do they do with their kids? So we, like I said, we started about four weeks ago and we've talked to a number of different organizations about how could they support us? The childcare centers, they're still working under the guidelines of half at their centers, so that's difficult. So they were very interested in partnering with us about how they could use our centers so that they could broaden and support. So we, as Esther said, Friday morning at nine o'clock, we have a Zoom call with a number of community partners, recreation centers throughout all of our towns in the S A U. But daycare centers in Exeter and the surrounding towns to talk more about this community care center and how that can be supported, but maybe we could even have some satellites. So we will have more plans next week, but that is, we're really excited about how that opportunity can come up. And I I just want to say thank you to all of those partners because when we reached out to them, it wasn't, no, we can't do it. It's it's we we're struggling, but we're going to work with you to find a way to do this. So I do want to make sure that everyone that's on this call understands how this this community is partnering together to do what we need to do for all of our families, both socially, financially, but also educationally. So that's where we're at. We can report more next week and get into further the details of of the logistics of how we're going to do it.
I think that's really helpful. Thank you for sharing that information. I think it'd be helpful to give further updates. I have one last question, which is that the board, you know, we're obviously having to confront this pandemic and the safety and security needs around that and keeping folks safe and how you educate them. But we have other things that we're concerned about, as does the staff. And one of those areas that's been a priority for the board is looking at issues of diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. And I hear a lot of our discussion tonight has already touched on issues of issues of equity and inclusion. But diversity, maybe not so much, and justice issues, not so much. The board went through a training this summer to try to educate ourselves. And that committee has stayed active throughout the fall, or excuse me, throughout the summer. And I I think it'd be helpful if Drew and Steve feel comfortable in sharing something about how that work might continue, that isn't just going to be put on pause for forty-five days or more. That how can we continue to address those important issues even during a remote learning platform?
So one of the things we actually discussed today was in the professional development at the outset of the of the school year with the the staff is including at least a day of D E I J training and looking at just exactly those issues, Patrick, and and that'll be actually one of the things that will be included in that training. Are the guidelines that we spent a lot of time on in in this group's training as a starting point. There've been a couple, as you, I'm sure you know, there've been a couple of book groups that have been meeting throughout the summer as well, that will continue throughout the school year. And you know, our our plan is to to continue that work in in one way, shape or form. For example, the affinity groups could be held in person or face to face. Excuse me, in person or remotely. So we'll continue that work as well. It might have to be adjusted in terms of our approach, but I I expect to continue on as we sort of had planned out initially.
If I could just add, so the diversity, equity, inclusion and justice committee has still been really active throughout the summer. Certainly, it's paramount in this time for us to continue to make sure it stays on the forefront of what we're looking at in terms of the education of children. We have set a number of goals and and one Drew just mentioned is is to really establish some affinity groups so that different people can get together and and talk about issues of racism and related topics. And then we also will continue the S O program and we're looking at doing that at both schools. That's a program where students from a variety of diverse backgrounds come from or now it would be virtually, virtually would share children's literature with our students and talk about how it relates to their personal identity as part of our curriculum. And we're continuing to review our curriculum as well in in this area. So we've been really active. The committee's been a really productive committee and I expect, and again, we'll do some professional development during those opening days.
Patrick, I can add to that from the U perspective, having met with the D E I J committee a few times, our work in advancing it across the S A U continues as well. We've expanded to add D E I J representatives out at Swayze Central School. I just spoke with the principal from Strata Memorial today, who has a couple of people that she would very much like to participate. C M S and E H S have staff members as well who would like to participate. So the the broader picture of having representatives in each of our schools with active committees similarly are working towards the same goal that Steve and Drew just shared. And as you know, as I've shared with the joint board as well as the cooperative board, our goal in continuing to research and build and ultimately fund an office of diversity, equity and ju- inclusion and justice for the S A U as a position that then coordinates across all of our schools within the community. So that work certainly will not slow down. We also have professional development that where we've earmarked fifteen thousand dollars for specifically for anti-bias, anti-racist training for board members, our staff members, senior leadership team, administration. We've done some work already in that area from an equity-centered leadership perspective with a lot of the administration that you see on this this call as well as others across the S A U, that will continue as well. So lots going on relative to D E I J from the S A U perspective as well. So it's definitely a team effort.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Sarah, was that a hand that I saw? Excellent.
Yes, please, thanks. I was on the diversity, equity and inclusion and now justice committee for for a year and it's a really meaningful committee. I appreciated working on it. The other piece that I was really impressed was with the amount of work that teachers were doing to comb through the curriculum and K through five and to think about different kind of literature they're presenting to students and the way in which they were presenting their lessons. And so I just wanted to comment on that because I saw the teachers collaborating and talking and working on that. And I think that's the kind of in-depth work that some of our our teachers are taking on that's so critical. So. I I had a question, maybe someone could speak to parents. So I've heard from so many parents who are working or not working, but I think that talking about the level of parent support needed in remote learning is really a topic that parents are thinking about. I have a rising fifth grader. He learned throughout the spring as a fourth grader to be a more independent learner. But I know that if I had a kindergarten, first or second grader, that those are really challenging skills to learn. And so I, if someone could talk about, you know, how parents, you know, can support their child throughout the day, especially for our working parents, that they might be in a meeting. Do they need to get a child on a Zoom call for twenty minutes, off a Zoom call for thirty minutes, on a Zoom call for twenty minutes? I just think there's a practical piece to parenting, working and schooling. Successfully supporting your child in this process. So if someone can kind of speak to parent expectations for remote learning, that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Great question. I think perhaps maybe start with our principals.
So certainly, we're, I, there, there's parent involvement and it's part of of what happens, especially with very young children. I mean, I, you know, it's that said, we will be doing our best to provide supports, both individually and activities that are engaging, that allow parents to go back and forth. There will be flexibility in terms of some of the choices in terms of what parents engage with. We will share the times when classrooms are meeting. And we will be also providing supports as we can with our staff to connect with kids individually, virtually. So the best we can, we're going to try to engage kids, we'll try to use activities that are engaging. But there's no question that having parent support will certainly enhance the remote learning. It it, they are young children and and that is one, they do benefit from that support. But we'll also be looking for ways that we can provide that support remotely.
I think, and this is another example of of things that we learned from the spring that we can apply to make the fall better is just creating more organization and more efficiencies or streamlined ways for kids and families to stay organized. For example, like we're moving to all Zoom instead of sometimes using Google Meet and sometimes using Zoom. And so having, you know, standard meeting links, for example, that so you're not switching back and forth between different places. I think there are going to be so much more efficient ways that we can organize ourselves. So that organization isn't as dependent on the parents to help out with.
Erin, I can add, overall, our student service population, for example, school counselors and social workers. Now that there are also two social workers, those are those main focus of those two positions would be to work when engaged with families, particularly ones that maybe in the beginning have more challenges about how to support that remote learning, Sarah. So we have an additional resource. Thank you to the all the people that voted that secondary, second social worker in. So there is a full-time social worker at each building as well as school counselors. And part of what we're doing at S A U level with Ellen and Helen is bringing those providers together to really brainstorm, how can they creatively work with families? How can they consider doing home visits with a perhaps an administrator for those parents that are need that? We all, all the student service people got training in crisis, family crisis planning this spring for for remote learning and and those issues that can arise from these situations, certainly that may be different from in-person learning. So along with the teacher support for those kind of quote unquote struggles around maybe completing work, et cetera. There's also going to be additional supports for families that are struggling more with that social, emotional pieces. And I just encourage any family to reach out. I would say sooner than later, because sometimes we can make some small adjustments to support the family and keep the stress level down instead of it snowballing and it getting so frustrating that it's a situation that can really cause a lot of anxiety for everyone in this in the family unit. So certainly reach out right away to an administrator, your school council, social workers, et cetera. And in that orientation sessions that each family will have an opportunity to know how to access those and where to contact the different resources.
Thanks. I just think that, you know, in addition that providing information to to parents about ways that they can successfully support their child or expectations about what they could do, as well as saying, you know, we're going to help your child learn to be an independent learner with these steps. And so that, I think, the more parents are educated about the process, the more success there will be at home. We had a great experience with my son's teacher on, she just happened to send it on Sunday evening, sometimes first thing Monday morning, which is a one page of the expectations for the week and he would check each thing off as he did it. I could look at it and had all the different meetings he had throughout the week. I know that different classroom teachers had different processes and that we're looking to have more equity in a schedule. But I just wanted to say that that was really helpful for me as a parent to understand the expectations for my child throughout the week and how I could support him. I don't know if all classrooms ran that way, but that's sort of the intention of my question to educate for teachers to continue to educate the parents so that they can keep the process going at home. So, thanks.
Hi, Patty.
Hi. So it's super clear tonight that while you guys have been knocking yourselves out, trying to get the kids back in the school building, a lot of work has been simultaneously done to improve the remote option. Which I think we all thought was a possibility at some point this year. So I really appreciate that. I keep hearing that we will assess this this plan in forty-five days. Do we have a a date that we are putting out there, an exact date? I mean, I know a lot can happen unexpectedly. But it was it October fifteenth that I hear that?
So we assess it every day, but right around that time, around the middle to end of October, we've thought about near the end of the academic term, a typical quarter, right, is forty-five days. Just looking at when the weather turns and when we're being informed when cold and flu season begins. Just, you know, again, taking stock in what's the forecast looking like, talking with our health experts, our medical doctors, certainly Ms. Garrity can weigh in on this as well. You know, looking at an increase or decrease and then being able to make a determination at that point. Do we have to stop doing any of our one-on-one meetings or any of our in-person meetings with students that are, we're charting, you know, students who are coming in for either additional help or or services? Do we have to stop having staff be in the building? Have to do a full remote again, such as everybody's going home based on an emergency order? Just using that timeframe to weigh that out as a, just as a benchmark. Know that we're going to be looking and assessing and getting feedback and information all the way through and then again, through the year. We also want to use it as an opportunity where things look like they're improving and we're receiving that kind of information. We can then open up and phase in more students and more opportunities to have in-person learning. We just felt that to be a natural time to be able to do that.
Right, correct. I mean, we all know that the primary goal is to get the students back in the buildings face to face. The other thing last night, I I could be repeating a little bit about what Sarah said and maybe Neil, but last night I think we saw a slide of the typical day in a elementary student's life. And I, I'm not sure if I'm hearing that still, like there'll be a very structured clap, core classes, twenty minutes on Zoom or and then some work on your project piece to it. But every teacher was sort of going to have that same format. Maybe every yeah, generally, every teacher was going to have that same format. And I just wanted to kind of circle back because it's still that nine to two fifteen timeframe?
It is. I'm going to ask both principals to kind of talk through that, just to cover that for us, okay?
Yeah.
So I can jump in. This was, this was on my slide. So the, this is all very draft and draft form, but the day for students would begin at eight fifteen and would go till two fifteen. There would be blocks of each content area. And that would be consistent across each grade level. So the the instruction could be, it could take all sorts of different forms. It could be a whole group, it could be small group. That's kind of going to be dependent on the the teacher and the students that are in the class and the supports that are necessary in the class. That's kind of going to be dependent on the teacher and the students that are in the class and the supports that are necessary in the class. There'd be, there'd be unified arts classes, one each day. We'll have guidance built in periodically throughout each week or each by week, we'd have STEAM classes, so science, technology and next. There'd be a lunch block, there'd be, you know, breaks built in. And then like Neil was mentioning before, there'd be a morning meeting for just like a, you know, setting the stage, setting the day and a closing meeting to, you know, just reflect on the day and, and say goodbye for the afternoon.
Thank you for bringing that back up again. This is the primary concern that I get from my peer group, other moms and dads out there. And it is really, I brought this several, several times, but it's really about the structure of the day. Perhaps even if students have different homework teachers, they still could potentially have a learning group to support each other socially and emotionally. I mean, ideally, it'd be great if every teacher had the same lesson plan, but I think that's a reach, given our various learners and teachers alike. But I know you're, it sounded like in your, you're going to be talking about ways to help streamline some of this for this purpose through your professional development. So I appreciate that being brought up tonight. And then I'm good.
Any other question? No? Good. Thank you. Any other board members have some questions to ask? Okay, so what I'd like to do then is we have about 100, 182, 170 or so guests who are on. I'm going to open up the chat at this time and I'm going to ask folks to enter their questions into the chat function. Should there be any questions? So one from Nicole Mazer. Thank you all for the incredible amount of work you're doing. Please know a large part of the population is very grateful for you. I believe this was addressed. Now it's starting to scroll on me. Should have known that was going to happen. But just to be clear, plans are in the works to meet the needs of children who don't have an IP or 504, but maybe struggle socially, emotionally and need FaceTime with their peers. Correct? Dr. Bennett, did you want to address that?
Yeah. Esther talked about this a little bit, but by using guidance in our new social workers, we're really going to be making sure, making sure that we're supporting students for social, emotional help. And we know for especially for this, the age of the students that we're charged with working with is that there does have to be some FaceTime and some opportunities to build a relationship with peers your age. So yeah, that is definitely something that we're going to continue to focus on and work with our mental health teams to do that in a safe way. And I don't know if anyone else wants to add, but I think that's such a great question, but and it's definitely something if we didn't articulate how important that was for us, it is something that we are continuing to focus on.
Great. Did anyone want to add to that? Okay. Next question, thank you for your hard work and planning. Has there been any consideration of a hybrid model? For grades K to five, each class could be divided in half, eight to 10 students and use a half-day AM or PM or every other day approach. The learning time will be equal, if not greater than the proposed virtual schedule. The virtual schedule sounds great in theory, but for the younger students, particularly K to two, it will require a high level of parental oversight that may not be possible for most families. So the, I'm happy to take this. The hybrid committee was one of four committees that looked at that base model. Ms. Garrity was on that, on that committee with us. We looked at that and gathered a ton of information around the needs to be able to provide, first of all, a definition for hybrid, but then also to understand what the, how that would work and the feedback from the community. One of our parents, our parent rep, who happens also to be an extra elementary school parent, conducted a survey for us with parents and it came back, results came back rather flat from parents looking for absolutely an in-person situation. And then followed by a remote with several comments about how difficult that would be for them in a hybrid, whether that were an alternating day or a half-day in and a half-day out. It also proved problematic for our teaching staff and that we're defining hybrid as one teacher teaching half of his or her class physically and the other his or her class remotely and then flip-flopping either morning and afternoon or every other day, which we felt was an unsustainable model and the amount of time and energy that would go into planning for both of those platforms as well as somehow can conducting synchronous instruction in a live and remote format proved very problematic. And that was something that we informed our teachers. We were not going to be asking them to do, given the complexity of trying to do everything in a COVID world moving forward. So there was a lot of discussion around a hybrid group. Looking at an in-person model with a modified schedule was the direction we had intended to go. We have talked about that and explained why we weren't able to move in that direction at this time, although we'll continue to plan for that. We still believe that the remote is the best, the best option for us at this time. Next. Did anyone want to add anything to that with regard to hybrid? Okay, thank you. The next comment, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Ryan and the board for all your hard work, calm and expertise. Appreciate your focus, being on the health and safety of our students and staff. My question is in reference to remote learning at LSS. We personally had a great remote learning experience in fourth grade last year. Shout out to Mr. Schmidt, nice job Schmitty. My concern is with how information and assignments will be disseminated to students and parents each day. Is there any way that LSS could provide professional learning to the staff to discuss organization, organizing and consolidating a means for disseminating each day's assignments with attachments and links? It's hard to go from seesaw to email to journeys online, et cetera. If this process could be streamlined for each grade level, a teacher would be greatly appreciated. Maybe using a webpage for each teacher to access all links and assignments. Also, could students pick up physical copies of required readings such as journeys and EDM books? So that we could read a book rather than online. So principals, is that something that you'd like to address?
I can jump in on, on this one. This is another example of how we learned a lot over the course of the spring. There are a lot of questions in here, so I'm going to do my best to get to all of them. So I think one of the main goals that we're going to be tackling is, like I said before, consistency and how we are disseminating information and reducing the number of emails and the different places, different numbers of places that people need to go. Our kids need to go to access their, their assignments. So seesaw was used a lot and this is less a learning management platform and more the goal for that is more to use it as a portfolio for evidence of student learning. So between Google Classroom and Seesaw, I think those two sort of create a nice marriage, shall we say. Without having met with my staff, I can't say definitively which way we're necessarily going to go or what exactly that's going to look like. But I, what I can tell you is that one of our goals is to create consistency and make learning more streamlined and accessible each day. So like Sarah gave an example of the checklist for students and parents to have over the course of the day. That's a perfect example of creating a streamlined approach. So that really is, is our goal.
I just want to add that part of the intention of the orientation and check-in meetings would be to share physical materials so that that type of learning can take place as well.
Great. Go ahead, Chris.
I just want to add too, so parents know, we did hear from you and we asked that you would have to log into multiple different sites or applications. We have worked with the principals. We heard loud and clear to make that easier, more streamlined. So we've done that. We collected a common database of the applications that all of our elementary school used. And we'll be using a single sign-on product that you only have to sing on, sign on once to have capabilities to all the different applications that our students would be using. So that will make it much easier for parents. If there's different apps that are being used by different grade levels, it will be the same sign-on that they would to get on their computer to get them to those applications. So just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted, that parents understood that process as well.
Great. Great, thank you. How will you assess a track group for kindergarten students since you have no information about these students yet? That might be for Mr. Adler.
We're certainly, I mean, assessment is one of the things that we're going to be talking about as we look at professional development. We're actually, that's going to be a focus for one of our full days. I don't have a full answer for that at this point in time. But we will be putting in place a variety of assessments, exactly what that's going to look like right now. I can't, I can't say. I don't know best if you want to add anything.
I think the only thing I would add was this, we are going to look at some different ways that we, that the the teachers are going to connect with students one-on-one to build those relationships, but also learn more about sort of their areas of strength and areas of need or weakness so that we can build upon that and look at how we can gather that information. We're going to work closely with the teachers to develop a system to be able to do that and provide kids what they need when they need it.
Great. Not seeing more hands go up. How do you expect a young elementary age student to stay somewhat connected to a computer for five hours a day? Or come back after a one-hour break to more screen time? Who would like to respond to that?
We know that can be a challenge. I mean, we'll be working to try to make, first of all, we're going to be trying to provide limited amount of times of screen time and then opportunities for students to work in a variety of ways that are different choices related to whatever the main mini, we'll have mini lessons and then we'll have work time, we'll have staff who will connect remotely through small groups and individuals. We will look at trying to find ways of reinforcing, ways to make materials that are engaging, connecting to students' interests. A lot of the practices that you typically do in a classroom, we'll try to be doing remotely as well. There's no question that it's harder, but we'll access everything we can to try to keep the kids engaged that way. And then if we finding that a child's having difficulty, we'll consult with the family and really review the plan.
And just reiterate something that Stephen mentioned before, we'll have more opportunities at the outset, at least about supplies and pickups and, and things like that. So there'll be more opportunities for us to distribute things to families this time around.
Great. Thanks. Will community learning centers be free or will there be a cost? So I believe that the cost question was answered in the above frequently asked question. And the response to that is we are working on the development of the community care centers at common school sites as well as community daycare providers to provide all-day care for children. The community care centers will be for students who may need tier three or tier two supports with an optional before and or after-school care component. The daycare sites are working to meet full daycare needs, costs, transportation, food, et cetera. Plans are being worked on. We hope to have more information soon. We will keep you posted as the plans become more specific. You see, thank you for all of your hard work. Is there any plan for the children to meet other kids in their class they don't know? They do need relationships. Who'd like that?
I can just, Ben and say, you know, the orientation is an opportunity for the students and families to meet the teacher. In terms of the students meeting other students. You know, we'll be having the small group and whole group meetings. That's part of the intent between, between the opening beginning of the day meetings and the closure at the end of the day. And I would, I can say at Lincoln Street, I can probably assume Steve that your circle time, that will be opening and closing times, a lot of it's going to be built around getting to know you and relationship building.
American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines say no more than one hour of screen time for five and under. I'm still unclear how you will meet the academic needs within a remote option and stay within this guideline. I think that in talking about varied activities, whether they be on-screen or off-screen, I think that's the goal is to try to minimize that amount of screen time other than the direct whole group instruction for some of the one-on-one. I think by also talking about limited one-on-one in-person opportunities will be helpful. But certainly trying to minimize the amount of screen time is what I've heard both principals talking about while also trying to maximize that direct instruction that either of you want to maybe elaborate on that?
I think you nailed it, David.
Okay. When will the board vote on this and where can a parent voice their choice in this? I think we'll ask Mr. Blaken to answer that.
Thanks, Dr. Ryan. The, the board plans to discuss that process at our meeting a week from today on Tuesday. I assume that we will decide to make that decision on that same meeting, the 18th of August.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentleman's asking that we please open up the Q and A so I can read questions verbatim. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be doing that this evening. Last night at the joint board, the Q and A that occurred during the public meeting was not appropriate for a public meeting. It's not something that we would typically permit during a public meeting in person. And therefore, we've made the decision to read each question publicly into the public record. The chat will also be made available with the minutes as well as the video once it's all posted. Would you do a small? Would you do small in-person mental health group sessions? Who would like that? Go ahead, Dr. Ben.
It depends on the students. What I hear from our mental health providers, they're preferring to do individual or family group work and not having other kids in the group. What we've talked about is lunch bunches or other opportunities that isn't so much counseling, but, but typical guidance curriculum in groups. I wouldn't say necessarily it would be face-to-face, but it would be more interactive and could be remote. Some of the students that do require some continued mental health support will fall under those students that require some face-to-face instruction that are identified through teams, school-based teams.
Great, thank you. Would there be homework as well, trying to figure out a structure to our day? Thank you for all of your work.
My, I've not had this conversation with my teachers. My expectation would be certainly at the primary level. We've engaged the kids actively in learning. Certainly, we could provide recommendations to the family. We're seeking it, but I don't anticipate that it will be assigned. I could be wrong.
I know this is at the beginning stages, but the care centers that are supposed to be available for essential workers, how can you ensure each child has a spot? Also, is this going to come at a cost to parents? So the first part of that question, I'm going to ask Esther to answer. The second is cost, transportation, food service are still being worked out. That's a question that's already been asked and is also at the top of this chat, chat box.
Yeah, the, the, the community care centers that are at our school sites are for our schools that are the far students that are in schools on that tier one, tier two, tier three process. So I'm not sure if you're, if that question is geared to maybe different care centers that are in existence already, but our school site ones, the care centers are not directly related to essential workers' needs. They're related to not directly related to essential workers' needs. They're related to student need.
Thank you. I have two children, one at MSS and one at LSS. Will the proposed schedule for the remote learning be the same for both schools?
There will be, there will be similarities in terms of having common lunchtimes, common snack times for, for kids. Language arts could vary depending upon grade levels. Math can vary depending upon grade levels. Specialists could vary, but certainly the times when you'd have lunch, the times when you'd have snack, the time we'd have morning meeting, those will be similar across the board.
I think it's, I think it's something we can look into for sure to look at lunch and recess being at similar times between the two schools. Well, I think that's a smart comment.
Drew, just a note, sometimes when you're speaking, it kind of breaks up and gets soft, okay, just for information. Which is perfect for this because this one says, Drew, can you speak to the learnings from last year around the Seesaw platform? Pros and cons on how it went and how it may not have worked as well as hoped as an LMS since it was onboarded for a different core reason initially? Will there be streamlining between this, that as a tool versus Google Docs to submit work, for example?
So I spoke to some of this, I think, before. We definitely learned a lot about Seesaw as we rolled out remote learning. We did some backend organization over the spring, so things were organized a little bit better. But we heard from the student view, it was like this laundry list of assignments and over time we, we learned how organize things and classes and like Unified Arts as well a little bit better. The overarching goal for Seesaw is to have it be basically a long-lasting portfolio for students so they're, they can be a demonstration of what they've learned and what they're, you know, how they've expressed their competencies. In terms of it being a way to give assignments, that's sort of up in the air a little bit. And what I mentioned before is that I think, you know, something like Google Classroom can be a little bit cleaner in terms of deploying assignments. But I, I don't want to necessarily, without having spoken with the staff, I don't necessarily want to marry ourselves to Google Classroom. There are other ways, like Sarah was expressing before, I like checklists, as simple as that, that, that were very successful as well. Bottom line, the Seesaw is to show what the kids have learned and not necessarily just for giving assignments. Does that answer all the questions?
I believe it did, and if not, we can ask for some follow-up and we can post that as well, okay? How about a hybrid of full return for the EDP where classroom numbers are very low? This is an excellent question. I was hoping Dr. Bennett, you might be able to address that.
The current plan for EDP is to focus on face-to-face IP services, especially for that age group and the student need population that we have. They require a lot of hands-on and direct instruction. There's a lot of reasons why we're not going to have the community peers in the EDP. But we are going to offer, as we did remotely and through the summer, is some Zoom interaction, thematic units and support for those community peers. But we are going to, as of right now, keep the face-to-face for students on IPs with disabilities and the staff in that building.
Great, thank you. What is the expectation for attendance? I do not foresee being able to keep my five-year-old on a computer, independent learning for the outlined time. Can we only participate for the ELA math portion?
One of the things we did last year was we really tried to fit our program around parent needs. We haven't set, had the conversation about what's required and what's choice, but certainly we're going to need to look at, at how we meet the structure of family needs. How that's going to look, exactly what that's going to look like, I'm not certain. But I do know that providing options and choices will be important. Certainly, we want to have certain things that'll be required. We haven't said what's going to be required yet at this point.
Thank you. Do you know how much flexibility there will be in the school day? As many have mentioned, it will be difficult to oversee activities from nine to two for those parents working full-time. Thank you for all of your efforts.
My answer to that would be very similar to what I said the last time. We're still working on that one.
I agree, Steve. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, everyone. Will we be provided with a class list or directory prior to the start of school so parents can begin to plan playdates to help children get to know their classmates?
This is usually something that's done by teachers at the beginning of the year. Obviously, we can't distribute, we can't distribute personal contact information at school level, but a lot of times that's done through PTO groups and teachers. So I would expect that to continue the same way that it always has.
If a child qualifies for some in-person teaching or services due to their IEP, will transportation be provided?
I think Helen can help with this, but I do believe so.
Helen Rest? You are still muted, my dear.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again? I was responding to somebody who was questioning Drew's soft voice. They can't hear him still and I was telling them. I already told him, so I missed the question, sorry.
Not, not a worry. If a child qualifies for some in-person teaching or services due to their IEP, will transportation be provided?
Absolutely.
There you are. Thank you. Could you tell us what model Chromebook will be used in grades one and two? So I think we can get that answer from Richard Pratt.
No, yeah, I think it's a, it's 11-0. Anyone remember the number? Five. I'll look it up. I'll look and I'll have it in a few seconds. Continue on.
If you just want to post it into that chat function, that might make it easier. Thank you. Are we not able to see the questions that the audience is currently asking? I'm not comfortable with that. That's correct. Again, last night's joint board meeting taught us a lesson that we are going to read every question from every constituent aloud. It's also going to be saved in and posted with the minutes. It's also part of the record for the video that will also be posted. Can we survey parents again now that we know a full return in person is off the table? Parents may respond differently to the idea of a hybrid print, a hybrid plan now and actually prefer it. So we're not necessarily prepared to survey parents again today. We're fully focused on a remote instruction plan because based on what we have available to us to operate our school safely, we're not 100% certain that we would be able to do that on an in-person basis just yet, which is why we're taking the precaution of opening fully remote. Ultimately, we'll be asking parents again about their comfort level and that will be school-based. It will not be coming from the SAU. This question is, hello, first, thank you. I still don't think the plan fully addresses the large population of working parents. 8:15 to 2:00 PM won't work for most working parents, which means our kids won't really get the group interaction and structure as presented. Reality is, we will have to teach our kids on-off hours when they're alone or pay for full-time care while we work. The answer can't be that each situation is unique because I know this to be common. What will be available for kids of two working parents that will provide kids without an IEP group interaction and group learning? Are the conversations with area partners for programming something that will be out of pocket for parents? We answered that earlier. That's also up under the Exeter Elementary Parent Questions that addresses both cost, food service, transportation and how that work is progressing. It was mentioned that the tiers for additional support or for the care program would be based on last year's assessments and interviews with former teachers. How will this be possible for kindergartners who have not been assessed? Who have not been in the school system before? How will they not be left behind? Because I really feel, it really feels like this plan leaves them behind. So Steve, you had earlier addressed assessment of kindergarten. If you could just summarize what you had said, if you recall.
First of all, assessments, Keith, we will be developing an assessment plan. We don't have details on that yet. First and foremost, as we enter school, teachers will be getting, building relationships. We're looking to go connect, make connections with kids. As teachers work with children, they'll begin to gain information about who they are as learners. When we have a clear assessment plan in place, we'll certainly share it. It's not what's going to happen in the first week of school, nor is it ever the first, something that happens in the first week of school. It's always a build, building routines, making connections, forming a classroom community, and that'll be similar whether we're remote or in-person.
Great, thank you, Steve. Thank you all. Tonight's presentation has been very helpful and the amount of work and care is apparent. I would just like clarification on if the remote model has been voted upon for Exeter Elementary Schools. Thank you. That was a question asked earlier as well. That voting is going to take place next week. I think, Mr. Blaken, can you remind us of the date? I'm going to write it down because I have a feeling it's going to come up again.
Yeah, so it's, it is the 18th, next Tuesday is when we will discuss that next step. I assume that that means we will also then make the decision to have that vote that evening, that, that we didn't decide that. I think that's highly likely.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Why are we unable to start in-person and then move to remote if needed? The numbers at risk are likely lower than they will be in 45 days. I feel that if surrounding towns, Fort Smith or Hampton are able and willing, Exeter should be as well. That was addressed in an abundant manner last night. It's also included on our frequently asked questions page, which is linked at the top of the chat function. There are a couple of questions related to that as well as on the frequently asked questions for Exeter Elementary. So that information has already been shared. Can you please clarify if September 10 and 11 is a kindergarten orientation screening or both? How are incoming kindergarteners screened for IEPs and special services? Will kindergarteners be following the same 9 to 2:15 PM schedule? Or can you elaborate on what a typical kindergarten day will look like? Thank you.
So the orientation is not a screening. It really is a chance to connect with parents, for parents to share information about their children, who they are as learners, and for teachers to talk about programming and help prepare parents for working remotely as well as sharing materials. The, the assessment of students will happen as, as we start to work with students and again, we'll be developing an assessment plan. In terms of the schedule, it will be similar. I mean, you're, we are going to use a similar structure, but we again will be, the teachers will use what they know about working with children and do the best remote practices that they can do within the framework of what's available to them.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Andruski, a shout-out for you. Wow at Chris, single sign-on, music to our ears. Nice job, buddy. We are about five weeks away from school starting. Sounds like a lot of discussions still need to be had with the teachers themselves. How confident are we that a plan can be firmed up in the next couple of weeks? Is there a hard date when all of the curriculum is expected to be delivered to the parents? Steve or Drew, would you like to just affirm the, the work we're doing?
I mean, I, I've said it many times to our, our staff in the spring, but in terms of, of what they were able to do with virtually no notice and how they were able to grow over the course of the spring, I have every bit of confidence that we can deliver a really high-quality product. It's not, you know, it's not face-to-face instruction and as Steve started off with our presentation, we know that that's the ultimate goal. And that's, that's going to be best, but I think I have confidence that we can, we can make some lemonade here and do a really good job. And I put on some headphones. I'm hoping you can hear me a little bit better now.
Yeah, yeah. At the end of the year, it was widely rumored that children would stay in the same classroom as last year, meaning all the same pupils. Is this true? So I think what we're asking, what she's asking here is will they have the same teacher? Because we will not be physically in the building.
I can, I can speak to Lincoln Street's in regard to what we did. We moved students up largely in the same cohort, so the same classroom groups. Most students have a new teacher. There are a couple of teachers that did loop from one grade up to the next grade level with mostly the same class. So that I would, I would imagine that that so-called rumor is, is in regard to what we did at our school.
Great, thank you.
And then I would say that ours, ours was somewhat different, but we, we worked really hard to make sure that they moved up with peers. We did have some mixing in terms of looking at trying to continue to support balanced classrooms and support positive peer interactions. We do have a lot of new teachers, looping with those will be very hard. And so we certainly worked to try to provide social support. It wasn't the whole class that was moved up. We, we looked, we did mixing, but not the way we typically have done in the past. We tried to keep peers together so everyone had some connections as they moved forward.
Thanks, Steve. If you follow the class, but the child doesn't attend all of the Zooms throughout the day, will they be docked on attendance or workload? I believe that our principals are still working on how that attendance is going to take place. Is that correct? Mr. Adler, I think you gave that response earlier as well.
And again, what I just want to say is we really understand that, that we're going to need to have some flexibility in this. We're going to provide a clear schedule and let parents know the kind of learning opportunities. There's certainly going to be certain things we're going to very strongly encourage that be participatory, but we're also going to work really hard to provide options for parents so they can sort of help us create a path that meets their kids' needs.
Great, thank you. One of the things we learned from the spring remote learning was that parents need a technical support on borrowed equipment. Going forward with more equipment in the community, can there be a different resource for work orders for parents versus staff?
We were just actually speaking about this today, figuring out how we could, how we could provide a resource for teachers, students, parents, you know, somebody that was available throughout the, the day to answer and respond to any, you know, glitches between, you know, why doesn't this come up on my Chrome to, I can't find the link to so-and-so Zoom meeting. So we are looking into that for sure.
Great, thank you. I apologize if you already said this. Is the plan to be in session Monday to Friday or will Friday still be open for teacher and prep? Thank you. In parentheses, did I mention that you guys rock? That's very nice. It will be Monday through Friday. Will band still be an option for fourth and fifth graders?
We are working on this as well. Band is probably out. I don't know if we have the technological capabilities to coordinate multi-piece symphony, shall we say? But we are looking at trying to figure out how to, how to do instrumental lessons. So that's TBD though.
The orientation dates are not only for kindergarten, so my second grader with an IEP can meet his teacher in person if possible? Question mark. That is, that is a yes. Excellent, thank you. Can families opt into community care centers or must they be identified by the school in order to have access?
Right, right now, we're continuing to work through that on that tier one, two and three basis. Once we define what those numbers are from the schools, if we have the staff in the space, we, we were going to continue to open it up tier by tier. And we would love to have anyone that needed it come in. We just have to wait and see numbers and staffing.
Thank you. How are you able to support community care centers if you don't support an in-person return? Both involve children being together. It seems contradictory. Both involve children being together. It seems contradictory.
Sorry, I lost where we were on the questions. Again, we're taking in small groups, co-horted groups. Those would be 10 or less in those groups. That's why. It's hard for me to identify how large the whole program can be, um, because it is dependent on. Those small cohort groups staying, um, intact. We're really trying to keep to that in that. This is a group that has, um, some needs and that's what we're, that's our, that's our model, remote, trying to invest. While trying to address the needs of children tiers, particularly two and three in small co-horted groups.
Thank you for holding these meetings for public input. Please know most of us support you and I disheartened with the treatment you've received by some members of the community. Just a few things. Will general ed students be able to come in for small group or one-on-one work with their teacher? Or will this be reserved for children with IEPs? How will teachers individualize instruction for learners to provide enrichment opportunities through remote instruction? There's two more questions. If we already have a personal Chromebook, can you send a list of what needs to be installed? Or would it be easier to use a Chromebook from the school? And three, just to comment, it would be great if the lunch recess block could be the same across all grades. At MSS, LSS, so the kids can go out to play with their neighborhood friends that may be in a different grade. That we've made our common expectation in the S U's, uh, that our principals provide that as an anchor time for that very, very reason. So. But that first question, will general ed students be able to commit for small group or one-on-one work? With their teacher, uh, or will this be reserved for children with IEPs? From our perspective, we see that phasing in a periodic one-on-one opportunities with teachers, particularly outdoors. Uh, as we get through the fall, um, and then looking at based on our health conditions and what we're able to do, trying to increase. That whether it be with one student or a few students at a time, um, that's where the phase in really becomes. I think, uh, conservative for, for a reason. Uh, but I think that, that's absolutely, uh, on the, on the plan. If we already have a personal Chromebook, can you send a list of what needs to be installed? Would I, the principal be able to address the Chromebook question?
I can actually, um, I, I would recommend that you use the school one unless there's some reason that you don't choose to. And then we can work to load stuff on, but there are different filters on the school ones than perhaps a home one. And those kinds of issues that you may not want loaded on your home. Device.
Uh, and there was another question embedded in there as well. How will teachers individualize instruction? For learners to provide enrichment opportunities through remote instruction.
There's a number of different ways. First of all, we, we will be using platforms like IXL and Raz Kids that allow for individualization for both math and reading. As well as I believe there's some through what's called ready math or ready assessment. And then, uh, we'll also be working on, on project-based learning where kids will be really able to, uh, focus on exploring their interests and pursue it in different directions. Related to who they are as learners. So, you know, that again, one of the things we're really working hard to do, we're working with our staff to do is look at. How do we make learning engaging? And one of the others was, how do we make it, um, be meaningful and in-depth? And so through project-based learning as well as through online platforms, we hope to be able to provide individualization.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, very good questions. Uh, among the three factors in highly effective remote instruction, uh, circle is, uh, the word deeper. Can you talk about what this means in parentheses, uh, deeper learning question mark? Examples of what it looks like? How does voice and choice and PBL relate? An impact of remote and CVE on assessment. Does that mean? We should expect letter grades and report cards or narratives or something else? Who would like to tackle? That three-parter?
I can, I can start off and tackle, tackle the, uh, the part about the word deeper that was on our, our slideshow. So that's sort of in regard to Bloom's taxonomy, which is, which is, um. Talk about depth of learning, right? So the, the very bottom of the, the chart is, is just remembering. And so that's like memorizing, things like that. The top of the chart is, is evaluating and creating. And that's really like an apply, an application of the skills that students are learning. So project-based learning, uh, provides opportunities for just about every, um, phase of the chart of, of Bloom's. So with project-based learning, we can provide assignments that, um, hit multiple, uh, depths, I guess, of, of learning. Depending on student need, um, and it also project-based learning provides choices for kids to work on things that they're interested in. But yet still, um, still hit, uh, the learning goals that the teacher needs, uh, to accomplish. Um, so it kind of, it. It's multifaceted in terms of what project-based learning can do if, if it's, if it's done well. So, uh, that term deeper, um, in the chart is really referring, uh, to that. I lost the question, so I want to.
That's okay. Um, the other one, uh, there's, there's another here.
Can I add a part about deeper as well?
Yes. And then ask one of you to provide examples of what it looks like.
Sure. I'll give you specific examples. So besides the project-based learning, uh, one of the ways to get deeper is let's say that a teacher presents a math problem. It's amazing the quality of conversations that students can have about how they solve that problem, especially of, you know, of it. You know, and, and for kids to share their work. One of the things you can do remotely is different kids can sort of share their screens. If they can explain how they got their answer, different kids can see the answers. That requires higher level thinking. That opportunity to have math talks and math conversations is just one simple way within mathematics. That you can really have deeper learning. In the area of reading, certainly we teach a lot of fundamental skills. We teach phonics, we teach phonemic awareness, we teach fluency and vocabulary. But we also read, talk about comprehension and we get involved with literature and we talk about the meaning of text and, and what does it mean and who characters are. So even within the fundamentals of literacy and math instruction, there's a lot of opportunity to go in depth to explore thinking. To not just be at what's called the depth of knowledge one or a depth of knowledge two, which is more fundamental skills. But, but you, you, and those skills are essential and they're part of what we do, but we also look at the quality of our instruction. So you provide the opportunities both, um, for kids to be working at their level individually. But you can, and through projects, but you can also do it just really in an engaging way when you do mathematical and literacy instruction.
Excellent. And then, um, perhaps, uh, I don't know, maybe, uh, Chris or Esther want to address the impact of remote. And CVE on assessment. Uh, and does that, uh, what does that mean in terms of progress reporting, upgrade reporting? Uh, for, for our youngest learners.
I thought Chris might answer this because I know he's, um, been working on it as, as, as frequently as today, but perhaps Stone, his son had a. Cause I think bedtime, so, uh, anyway, um, yes. So as far as the reporting system, we're working through that. We will continue. We did continue, start that Alma reporting in K two. We will continue to push that to grade three. That's that competency base with the ICAN statements. Again, that reporting, uh, system has been revamped based on parent feedback from last year. Um, and that was done this spring and over the summer. So I see Chris's, Chris's back. So Chris, we're talking about assessment and reporting system, and I just was getting to the K three will be the Alma. And then, um, if you want to pick up from there, feel free.
Yeah, we, um, the groups of all teachers, uh, administrators and curriculum coordinators throughout the SAU, we finalized our K five competencies. As well as our care document, which was our social emotional piece that was missing. And we got the feedback that that was so important to talk about the social emotional wellbeing of students while they're at school as well. Those are all completed and will be loaded not only into Alma, but also CSO. So that there's a continuous connection between, as Drew has mentioned, you know, the evidence of learning and then how it would be reported out. So that, that is all completed. So teachers have that base of competencies and we'll be updating our competency map. So, um, the, uh, parents at home can view them and understand them and know why we are using those competence to assess kids and their mastery and skill acquisition. So Zester said, we are ready to go K three next year. Um, you know, we, we heard from the community, have been made many changes that will make it easier for parents to understand. And we'll continue to work through it as, as in any plan, um, you always progress, uh, check your progress. And last year we went to a narrative because that's where we needed to be at the end of the year, and we'll continue to look at that, um, with the use of a new reporting system.
Great. Thank you. What do you mean by lunch bunch in this context?
Sure. I'll take that generally, uh, speaking lunch bunch refers to when a school counselor or a school social worker meets with. A group of students around a common theme, perhaps, um, social skills or, uh, might be. Family situations such as divorce. So there's usually a common theme and it gets together and it's basically kids eat lunch together. Socialize and it's guided or facilitated by a student support service person, um, to just talk about what's on their minds. Around the theme that the lunch bunch is focused on.
Great, Steve.
I just want to be clear too, that there are times when it's much more informal, where it can be just a staff member connecting with some children during lunchtime. It, it doesn't always have as clear. I mean, it, it, it does happen sometimes where it's all just a more informal. Connection and relationship building time. It has both. It's done in both ways.
Thank you. Shout out to Ms. Belgrade two. She did a great job mixing whole group, small group and individual Zoom logins. Is that the goal for lower grades, especially K to three? Perhaps some days you were logging on more than others? Thanks. I think I can answer that, that, that the mix of on-screen, off-screen. We've kind of addressed, but that is the goal in, in order to minimize screen time, maximize instruction time. Correct, gentlemen? Would those mental health groups be available for students not on an IEP 504? I think we talked about that above. My son struggled through kindergarten and struggles with emotional needs. This could benefit my child greatly. Can someone speak to the remote pods that parents are trying to establish? Can the school help coordinate these? I'm not certain that, uh, the school is going to be able to help coordinate neighborhood pods. I think that's something that, uh, families have taken on, um, themselves in order to best, um, organize. Families that live nearby with young children so that there can be shared care. I don't believe that that's going to be something that our schools are going to be able to help assist with. But, uh, pods I think can certainly communicate with, with school principals, um, as they see fit. But I, I don't believe, I don't think Drew or, or Steve, you're prepared to help coordinate neighborhood pods, correct? Could, could Drew answer what his, what his gut instinct is for homework for Lincoln Street?
No, he can't. I, I don't know, you know, I guess in remote learning, it's all homework, right? So I, I have a hard time answering that. I, I don't know. I mean, there, I'm sure there will be some things that the kids might be doing outside of. Eight fifteen to fifteen timeframe, um, if that's what is meant, uh, by homework, but I, I don't know if it will. Follow the, the homework guidelines that we've established with the school board. You know, the, the 10 minutes per grade level, uh, every night, or I think it's, it's around those lines. I think there's going to be plenty for them to do over the course of the day, but I, I can't say for certain.
Yeah, there's still time between now and start of school and some opportunities for discussion with teachers and stuff. And that's fair. When will we know if our child is assessed as tier two or three? I need to plan for work and I desperately feel my child should qualify for a community care center.
Yeah. As I mentioned, we're meeting on, on Friday with, uh, other local partners. And we're asking our principals to work through those identifications in the next week or so. So I hope to have more information on specifics, um, within a week and a half, two weeks.
Perfect. What percentage of student work will be completed on a laptop? We struggled completing assignments on CSO. An activity that should have been, uh, should have taken 10 minutes, uh, took an hour. Will physical work be sent home, picked up? And how frequently traditional paper and pencil work was much less, much less stressful for us. I understand that completely. I have a student at MSS and LSS. So will there be a blend of tactile work as well as online work, gentlemen? I think you, you, you did talk about that earlier, I think in your presentation. So that's a yes, because that's when the orientation, there are going to be materials that are also being handed out. A question about, uh, care centers has been asked a few times. We've responded to that. That's also in the frequently asked questions of the above. Thank you for all your time and dedication this summer. Part of successful remote learning is organization. Will you provide a list ahead of time? Of materials, supplies or tools families may need to help provide the best learning environment possible. I think, is that not what you're going to be including in your orientations? I see it unmuted, Steve. So you want to address that?
Well, I think, you know, this really relates to some of our learning from the previous time, you know, where we were successful was we were able to provide, you know, clear guidelines for what's going to happen. So can, and I think people, we said this earlier, parent, to help parents be able to support their kids in the best way possible. And we heard the anecdotal experiences of, of, uh, several teachers where the teachers, where a parent felt really well supported. So as we look at practices that are good remote practices, certainly this can be one of the ones we're going to be promoting.
Can you, could you consider outdoor classrooms when the weather allows, perhaps once a week where the student brings a yoga mat or blanket to sit on? Where's mask and social distance is enforced? I think that's part of some of the thinking in, in terms of some of the one-on-one. Instruction or, or interventions that we're looking at. So I think that that's a plan that we're going to continue to try and develop. Thank you for your hard work. Can textbooks and tangible materials such as workbooks be provided to minimize? Yes. So we've addressed that as well. The answer to that is yes. So that we'll be having both, uh. Virtual as well as physical, uh, materials for all of our families. Are there additional avenues of support being explored for those who may fall in tier one? But would require the remote center support and are unable to be set up in this platform due to capacity restraints? So a concern being those children in tier one who may have parents physically in the home, but whose jobs do not allow. For facilitating monitoring and on-demand support of the schedule. When the children are not participating in the actively engaged sections, not in the current small group or individualized support. So, uh, tier one students coming to community care centers, Esther.
Yes, um, we're actively working with those local community partners, um, so they can offer more of a daycare setting. With the student that can bring their, uh, Chromebook and have go through their school day. They wouldn't get the additional, um, support of a para, but they, we're looking to try and make spaces. And staffing again at those that isn't necessarily school-related, but our community related to offer more options for parents.
Thank you. Uh, Drew, just to note, uh, some of our guests are unable to hear you sometimes. It's just seems to be intermittent. That's all. Someone's asking is, so there's no guarantee that the area partners offering programs will be able to support care. For all caps, all children of essential workers during working hours. I think, uh, you just addressed that. Can lessons be recorded so parents can have their children watch them at a more convenient time during the day? That's a question I'll ask the principals. I think that's still a conversation we're going to have with our teachers.
I can, I know that sometimes FERPA is an issue for this. Certainly, uh, recording where only the teacher is seen might be possible, certainly not a recording which involves all students. Because that would be a breach of FERPA. We certainly will be providing ways for parents to always be actively involved with their kids. I think some of the learning we will provide will be videos, um, how, what that looks like right now is something we're going to have to develop. But active, a class learning where you've got kids involved, I would be surprised if we could do that.
Thank you, Steve.
And I, uh, I was just.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, just part of, um, what we call the flipped classroom is, is providing, uh, uh, sort of. Background information first for students to explore individually or independently. And then, uh, small group instruction or even a whole group instruction would happen, uh, after the students have that independent. I guess you could say research at the, uh, at the outset. Um, so sometimes, um, families. So sometimes families might see that happening at the older levels. I don't know if it would happen at K to two level, but that might happen three to five.
Great. Steve, if I could, David, if I can just jump in for a minute too about, just because everyone might know the alphabet soup of what FERPA is, that just that that's a federal privacy law.
Perfect, thank you. Someone's asked is for the computer, is it a Lenovo 300E Chromebook? And Esther has posted Chromebooks are a Lenovo 300Es, are the same Chromebooks that students get in high school. Will supplies for art, science, et cetera be supplied? Will we as parents be expected to purchase materials our children would otherwise have access to if they were in school?
Our goal would be to try to provide the, the materials that families need. Exactly how that's going to look like, I'm not certain right now, but certainly we'll provide as much as we can.
Great, thank you. Can you clarify what the vote is again? Only caught part of that. Thanks for your efforts. The session is a lot more informative than yesterday's. So next Thursday, I guess Thursday, correct, Mr. Blaken? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Thank you, Tuesday, August 18th. The anticip, the board does anticipate voting on the plan. The plan will be for discussion and the expectation is that there'll be a vote at the conclusion of it. So we'll look forward to seeing folks at that meeting.
Hey, can I just add, if, if people didn't want to give feedback beforehand, they are more than welcome to email any member of the board. Our emails are online.
Perfect. Are first graders being provided with the Chromebooks or do we need to purchase them ourselves? So we have answered that question as well. Those are iPads and Chromebooks. Those are on order and should be arriving. So you will not have to purchase your own technology. Do the teachers have any advice on how to use the upcoming weeks to prepare our children for remote learning? It's an excellent question. Have a good attitude with them about it, if I assume, but anything more specific? Excellent question.
I would say in terms of the orientation, those first couple of days, one of the main goals is we're hoping the, the Chromebooks will come in at that point, but one of the main goals would be to orient the family to the Chromebook and help identify, you know, specific logins or, or locations for them that they would need to go into. Getting all of that organized is part of the PD time prior to the ninth and 10th with the teachers. So that's where would answer that question.
Steve?
Hey, it's a great question. It's something I'll have to work on for our next newsletter.
Yeah, I would say comfort, comfort level around a keyboard, whether, or, or a tablet, some form, an iPad, if there's any technology at home. Just the ability to manipulate, use fingers and thumbs and if there's a mouse involved, use a mouse. I think just, just particularly for our younger learners, really beginning to experiment on electronic equipment. I think for Lincoln Street grades three to five, I'm still probably going to look at a fifth grader to help me with my phone. So it's probably limited in terms of the technology piece of it, but I know that that great attitude is a great suggestion as well. Last night it was mentioned, the staff members who are unable to attend work in person are not sprinkled evenly across the SAU. Is there a way to look at the staffing situation for LSS and MSS to see if these schools do have enough teachers to return in person? So we have, we have those data. We, with both principals, they've reviewed their data as well. The reason why we're not returning to in-person is, is that one of those very reasons is combination of what we've responded to already in the chat, which is above. One of those factors is our staffing. And so we want to make sure that we have enough staff to be available to our students in order to provide a safe environment. We can provide in-person and remote, but we would not be able to do in-person safely with the number of staff that we have who are working remotely based on their different accommodations. So in terms of the exact number, I don't have the, the data in front of me, but I know our principals do. And that's what's helped them reach this determination. What role will pairs be playing in a remote learning environment?
I can speak, go ahead Renee.
Oh, I'm sorry Esther. I can speak to the role of paraprofessionals under the special ed umbrella. And our first focus is to utilize them to meet the individual needs of our students on IAPs, including face-to-face, supporting remote instruction, which we did start in the fall and carried over into the summer. I know that there's paraprofessionals that are not, that do not fall under the special ed umbrella. So I'll refer to Esther or one of the other administrators to talk about that.
Yeah, the principals, again, we're working related to also those community care centers. To staff push our pairs into some of those depending on needs. We certainly are going to try to utilize everyone to their maximum that can either support remotely and/or those ones that are able to go to a community care center and have that direct contact. So that's our goal.
Excellent. A single sign-on sounds great. It also, it is also key that students and teachers are able to connect with each, each other directly with the least amount of parent technical intervention. How will teachers be able to connect directly with students multiple times a day with the least amount of parent intervention? Obviously it will be easier for older students. I think that the practice that's going to happen daily for students to become familiar with how they're logging on and taking care of that, I think I, I think students will surprise a lot of people with their acuity and their ability to be able to do that, but I don't know if our principals want to add to that. Okay. Will there be students in tier two and three that do not have IAP or 504 plans? Yes, we did not get the chance to be evaluated for an IAP prior to school shutdown. I'd recommend then the contact, that be contacting you, Dr. Bennett or what, the school principal? How would you recommend that the person make that happen?
I would feel comfortable with them contacting me because then I, I can check to see if there was any paper trail of anything and then I work with the assistant principals to look at the intervention models. And I am here all summer, so if they want to just contact Dr. Bennett or r-bennett@sa16.org, that would be great and I'll take it from there.
Great, thank you. I think the point that the person meant why CCC and not a regular and, or why community care centers are not a regular in-person start. I think they're missing the point that the staffing is completely different between the two. That may help clarify for people who keep saying that. Keep up the great work. Lots of details to work out. Thank you very much. We keep seeing the, that 84% of families responded that they want their children to attend in person. Can you please clarify the wording of that survey question? Dr. Ryan has said that he believes the answers would be very different if asked again now. I answered that survey that yes, I would like my children to attend school in person. However, I and, and I believe many others have changed our minds. At this point, as much as I want my children to attend school, I do not believe it's a safe, smart idea. I would like to put this statistic to bed. Please speak to the wording of the original question in the survey. Thank you for all that you, your staff and school board is doing to keep our children safe. You have our full support. Thank you so much. So I don't have the exact wording in front of me with regard to that. I believe Mr. Andruski, when we developed that survey, we were seeking to understand at that point where families stood in their confidence in sending a child back to school, either in a, in-person format without giving too much detail about it as well as if student or a family member in the household had an underlying health condition related to COVID-19, they would be permitted to participate in remote instruction. But at the time we sent that question on that survey, that was not an option for non-COVID related health conditions. Is that, is that how you remember it as well?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Ryan. We, we were chicken to see where people stood. Not only from the medical standpoint, but we did ask if people felt unsafe sending their kids back to try to get an idea if it was really medically based that families would be keeping back or where their concerns or fears of sending kids back. And we also asked a question, would they send, would they keep their, their children out until a vaccine had been located and was reliable? So there was four questions on that one and I'm not doing a great job of, of reading them verbatim because it's coming off of memory, but those were the reasons why we wanted to see who would return or who would be remaining out due to a medical issue or fear or vaccine. That was the, the reasoning behind those, that question.
Right, thank you. And so a lot of folks expressed that we didn't really have much of a choice in order to choose one or the other because we were being told at that time that we'd have to choose V-Lax or another online format that the SAU was not going to be providing remote instruction. If that's what we chose. And so a lot of families chose to return because they felt that they didn't have a choice. And then as we moved through and we switched over to, gosh, you know, these are our kids. We really need to be able to provide instruction for all of our students, no matter who they are. That's when we begin our conversation about, no, we need to offer remote instruction for any family who's just not ready to have their child return to school yet. At that point, there were several and, and the word several means many more than that. Families who reached out and said, well, gosh, you know, I would have changed my, my, my answer then because I, I want to stay in the SAU and I don't want to leave. And there were many families who had looked into V-Lax as well as homeschool have since rescinded their letter. So that's why that number, that's why I don't believe that that number would not be as high. It's based on the data we've received from families who indicated that they'd be part of that 84%, but are now like this, this community member saying that it would not be. It was never to assume that we know what parents are thinking. That's why we asked the question, but based on that direct interaction we've had with families since, that's why we believe that that number will be lower. I hope that answers that question. I have a younger child who will be attending a private preschool in the fall. With my drop-off and pickup schedule for him, my kindergarten will most likely miss morning meeting, part of ELA, some math and his lunch outdoor play. How will this be handled if it's occurring three days a week, every week? So what I, I would recommend is contacting the principal, the school principal and talking through, that's very, that's a unique situation and I just think that that may require some individual attention from, from the principal. Sorry to repeat, if community care centers are to involve cohorts of 10 students, why can't a hybrid model work or at least the ability to have small groups rotating? Again, the issue is around the factors that contribute towards a safe, safe school environment. That's way at the top. That's an ability that we, way at the top where we answer in a frequently asked question about what are the factors that contributed towards a remote? Will students be able to use off-screen consumables like EDM, math journals, cursive and journey? Yes, we, we answered that as well. There are going to be materials that are handed out during those orientations. Where they're going to have textbooks and other manipulatives that they'll be able to utilize at home. Just a point of clarification, are all K to five students receiving Chromebooks or only students with need? I believe it's all of our students. That's correct. As a teacher of 18 years at Lincoln Street, I wish that I could make a statement as a teacher and parent, how difficult this is for everyone and how, and how much we miss the kids and look forward to working with them and laughing with them no matter in-person or remote. We care about MSS, LSS families and genuinely miss them all. We truly appreciate the support of the community that my family moved to three years ago for the education system and I'm so lucky to teach in. We are all extra strong and can't thank families in our fantastic community enough. Thank you very much. That's, that's very nice. What are the safety precautions being vetted with the area partners for a daycare setting? Schools can be targets and a number of these centers likely aren't set up with the same safety measures as schools. These centers will need to staff and might have the same staffing issues with background checks, et cetera. What conversations have already happened? If they haven't happened, can you raise this in the Friday meeting with them? Parents can ask individually, but it would be helpful if this was part of your conversations with them. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll continue to ask those questions and more to provide safety, not only against COVID, but against any employee that should not be working with students. So thank you for raising that question and that will be something that we continue to, to talk about. We'll, we'll make sure that, that is asked on Friday during our, our Zoom call with the area partners.
Yes, thanks so much. I don't believe that number would be anywhere close to 84%, so referring back to the original question of why that number keeps bandied about. Who should a special ed para who works within the SAU district does not work in an extracurricular school? Who is unsure if they will be able to work with their teacher due to having a younger child at home on remote learning?
Dave, I can answer that if that's all right. So if you, if you could email hrhelp@sa16, then that will come directly to me.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Comment, we all feel this way, I believe referring back to a community member who lives and works in the community. And then they asked, who should we contact? So thank you, Dr. Campbell. Well, I'm sure Mr. Adler will miss seeing my son in his office. Will MSS provide assistance with behavioral challenges, rebellion against doing remote schoolwork? Mr. Adler?
I will miss all, seeing all the kids and I'm sure it was for very positive reasons I was seeing this child. We will certainly be looking at providing support for students and have used all the resources we have and we're, we're very fortunate in Exeter have, you know, we've added a school social worker, we, we have a school counselor, we've got amazing teachers. We will work with the family to support some of the behavioral challenges that could take place wherever the child has learned.
Perfect, thank you. Someone asked them, why don't you do a survey again? So I referenced that a little bit ago, probably close to 40, 45 minutes ago, that there'll be a school-based survey that we're going to be asking our principals, we're going to help craft to send out just to gauge level of, level of comfort. Obviously, as we continue to work towards something that is close to in-person, we all know that in-person is not what we thought it would be or is not going to look like what it did on March 12th. However, we believe and still believe throughout this entire process that being with a teacher is probably, as far as we're concerned, the very best model for instruction and for learning. So it's our goal to maximize that as best as we can. And so we'll have something more specific within each of our districts, asking level of comfort from our families so that we can try and build that model of phasing in what in-person looks like. So that when we're ready, perhaps even someday, cross your fingers, go back to full in-person, that we'll be able to do so. And so that would be why we're not doing the survey right now. And that concludes the questions from our community.
David, just wanted to point out that the original survey, I think, had about a 60% return rate. So even though the 84% was out there, that was not 100% of the community responding to that, just for clarification.
That's correct. Thank you. It's 3,115 responses from 4,953 families. I tend to geek out on data, so I'm sorry, I know those numbers. We are so fortunate to live in a community that there are so many caring individuals giving up so much of their time to thoughtfully make decisions for students and staff. I'm blessed to work in the school system. Thank you very much. What kind of cybersecurity measures are being implemented, especially with Zoom, given its privacy concerns and Zoom bombing?
Right, I can speak to this. We are getting the paid subscription Zoom, not the free Zoom that many of our folks used this spring and the paid subscription Zoom does, it has signed off on the privacy agreement with the state of New Hampshire. So I think we should be in good shape there.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I want to note the time, we're closing in on eight o'clock. This was a 5:30 start. I see that our, our members are very excited about that. Following up an evening of four and a half hours and knowing that we're doing this for the next two nights in three school districts and then again all next week. I believe I'm going to close out the chat at this point. Oops, someone snuck one in in the last second there. It wasn't fast enough. If we want to do something nice for you, what is your favorite dessert? This would be the same person that asked, how do we know that that's the real Chris Andruski? Last night. So with that, I will yield the microphone back to you unless any board members have any follow-up questions. So with that, I will yield the microphone back to you, unless any board members have any follow-up questions.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Dr. Ryan and everyone. This has been fantastic. Do any of my colleagues in the board have any more questions or comments they'd like to make or share, please? I can't see Dr. Ryan, so you have to see for me.
I do not see any hands. I see someone looking to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Don Bullens.
So I'll second, but before we go, I just wanted to say thank you to you, your entire leadership team in SAU16, to our team in Exeter, and to every single teacher and para and everyone who works to support us. It's, it's a fabulous effort under historically difficult circumstances, and you're all doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Can I also make a comment, Neil, before we go? Just, I also wanted to echo what you said, but also to add a thanks to all the families that have taken time tonight and last night with sharing their concerns and sharing their ideas. It's, this was titled a listen and learn session. I feel like I learned a lot in listening to people tonight, and I felt like our administrators listened to those families and that they learned a lot as well. And it will make our plans for the fall that much better. So thank you for taking the time to come out tonight.
Well said, Patrick, thank you. All right, there's been a motion and a second, so roll call, vote. A motion to adjourn, Don Bullens?
Aye.
Sarah Edwards?
Aye.
Patrick O'Dea?
Aye.
Patty Saret?
Aye.
Neil Blaken's aye. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Take care.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Bye, bye now.